Welcome to everybody, everybody today to the EOE's View and Scrutiny Committee. Just before we start, I must remind you that this meeting is being recorded for audio and video, live and subsequent broadcast. Okay, so welcome to everybody. I've just asked members to mute when they're not talking. I would just introduce myself. I'm, I'm councillor Liz Clooney, Chair of the Committee. So yeah, as it will be necessary to ask questions as we go through the meeting. If you could use the raise your hand function, that would be very helpful. Or put a message in the chat just to say you want to speak. And if members are unable to do this, you will still have an option to speak. But hopefully you'll be able to do one of those two things. So we're ready to start the meeting. So apologies. Helen.
Received apologies from councillor Hemley Way.
Right. Thank you. Okay, so now we're going to move on to the, yeah, apologies for absence, we've done that. Declaration of interest. Are there any, anybody got any interest to declare today? No. Okay. So we'll move on to item three. To approve the correct record, the minutes of the meeting held on the 9th of November 2020. So does everybody agree or has anybody got a point of accuracy to raise?
Agree.
I'll take, I'll take your silence as you're agreeing that all is in, you know, all is fine. Okay, so now, now we're going to move on to the Programme of Portfolio Holder Attendance, item four on the agenda. So first of all, we've got councillor Wheeler, who's going to talk, who's going to talk to us about his portfolio of housing health and wellbeing. So if you want to take it away, Henry, we're, we're all ears.
Hello, hiya. Yeah, I'm councillor Henry, for housing, health and wellbeing. In my brief, I have housing needs, I've got the leisure centres in my brief, the Bonnington Theatre, sports development and health promotion amongst other things. And I'm also, for my stint, I'm also a local youth worker and inclusion key worker at a local secondary school. Thank you.
Okay, if you want to carry on, I believe you've got to.
I've got a presentation.
Slides to show us.
Yeah, I have, yeah. This relates to the emotional and mental health and wellbeing of children and young people. But I believe Lance has got the, I've got it with me, but I believe Lance was going to put it.
Oh, here we go.
Talk it through, okay. So what I'm going to do is talk about the impacts of coronavirus on children and young people's mental health. So we go to the first slide. Sorry, next slide Lance, that's the first, that's the introduction. Thank you. Next one. Okay, so, so here, what I'm talking about here is the pre-COVID-19 UK children and young people's mental health statistics. Obviously, mental health is a big issue for, for young people. And one in eight children have a diagnosable mental health disorder. That's roughly three children in every classroom. One in six young people aged 16 to 24 have symptoms of a common mental health disorder such as depression or an anxiety disorder. Half of all mental health problems manifest by the age of 40, 75% by age 24. And 2017, suicide was the most common cause of death for both boys, 16.2% of all deaths, and girls 13.3% aged between five and 19. Nearly half of 70 to 90 year olds with a diagnosable mental health disorder have self-darmed or attempted suicide at some point. Rising to 52.7% for young, young women. Next slide please Lance. So this has a massive impact on adulthood as well. So one in three adult, adult mental health conditions relate directly to adverse childhood experiences. Adults have experienced four or more adversities in their childhood or four times more likely to have low levels of mental wellbeing and life satisfaction. Next slide please Lance. Thank you. So young people need more support. Less than one in three children and young people with a diagnosable mental health condition get access to NHS care and treatment. The average median waiting time for children in 2017 and 18 was five weeks to receive an initial assessment, nine weeks to receive treatment. In a Young Minds survey, I'll talk about Young Minds a bit later on as well, three quarters, 76% of parents said that their child's mental health had deteriorated while waiting for support from child and adolescent mental health services CAMHS. In total, less than 1% of the total NHS budget is spent on children and young people's mental health services. The number of A and E attendances by young people aged 18 or under with recorded diagnosis of psychiatric condition almost tripled since 2010. There is lots more information there. There are quite a lot of policy reports from Young Minds. I'm just going to go on to the next slide. And the next slide there, you can, you, there's useful references for pre-COVID-19 children and young people. We have statistics there which you can prove at your own, you know, when you want to. So the references are there. It's what I've just been talking about. The next slide please Lance.
Henry, can I just ask, presumably we can distribute the slides after the EAC?
Yes, yes.
Thank you very much, if that's okay Helen. Yeah.
That's fine, thank you.
Carry on, Henry.
Sorry. Okay, so COVID-19 has had significant impacts on young people's mental health services. During the COVID-19 lockdown period between March and June 2020, there was a significant reduction in referrals to mental health services, partly due to school closures, partial school closures and restrictions on GP services, but also related to face-to-face work ceasing for all but the most vulnerable. Referrals have decreased since then, but there is further work being undertaken to understand the impact of the reduction of referrals on children and young people's mental health and the impact of the reduction in face-to-face services. Next slide please Lance. The impact of school closures on wellbeing and mental health. Many young people who were receiving some form of mental health support through schools, for example, through school councillors or through learning support or mentoring and so forth, have had this support disrupted or cancelled during the pandemic. While some young people are now receiving online support from school councillors and so forth, this has sometimes not been possible because of logistical or said guidance concerns. In other cases, young people have been offered online counselling but have been able to access it because of concerns about privacy at home or because of a lack of appropriate technology. As schools reopen, there will be a need to be, you know, to have clear plans in place to ensure that in-school counselling services can operate safely and reach students who have lost access to support as well as those who are now, who now require support as a result of the pandemic. Thank you. Next slide please Lance. Mental health support teams in schools. The rollout of mental health support teams in schools, which began, had been in 2020, has been severely disrupted by the pandemic. So while mental health services, mental health support teams have been redeployed to support schools and NHS services, it's important to note that they've only been operational for a short period of time in a small minority of schools in England. And they will therefore only be able to play a limited role in national plans to provide mental health support as schools reopen. Before the pandemic, only two thirds of schools provided in-school mental health support. With every school likely seeing increasing mental health needs, including amongst children who have been bereaved or other traumatic experiences, it would be important to consider how all schools can provide fast and appropriate access to in-school support. Next slide please, thank you. So my cat's just calling, so he's about to jump on me at any time, sorry. Okay, what schools have to say. The Education Select Committee recently launched an inquiry into how the outbreak of COVID-19 is affecting all aspects of the education sector and children's social gap. So schools are saying COVID-19 is having a negative impact on young people's mental health. Schools are concerned that with most young people not currently attending school, many young people not having access to resources and materials with which to learn, there will be subsequent detrimental effects on both academic attainment and wellbeing. The impact of this, particularly on groups who are already disadvantaged, is likely to widen existing inequalities and to contribute to a rising of people looking for mental health support. The COVID-19 crisis is likely to have a long-lasting impact on young people's mental health and services that support them, including schools and children's services. The government must consider this throughout its emergency response and policies to recover from this crisis. Next slide please Lance. Young Minds, which is an organisation that works with young people and looks at all the issues around mental health and their impacts on young people, conducted a COVID-19 survey in March of this year. It was their first survey. They did three surveys in total. The first survey by Young Minds investigating the mental health impact of COVID-19 coronavirus on young people with mental health needs reveals the pressures that the crisis is putting on young people and support services. Young Minds carried out a survey of young people with a history of mental health needs between Friday 20th, March 2020, the day that schools closed to most children, and Wednesday 25th, March 2020, when there had been a further tightening of restrictions in order to establish the impact of the pandemic on their mental health and on their ability to access support. We, 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 we also asked respondents about helpful and unhelpful coping strategies and for advice to all the young people. This is a snapshot of young, young people's views and experiences at a particular time in a rapidly changing situation. The challenges they face, the concerns they have and their ability to access support may change considerably over the coming weeks. This was said in, obviously this is in March. Also surprising the coronavirus, also surprising the coronavirus and the public health measure designed to prevent its spread are having, have had a profound effect on many young people with a history of mental health problems. Next slide please. I'm sorry, I'm trying to control this cat on the table. Sorry, thank you. The first survey, sorry, the, the findings show from the first survey that 32% agreed, this is, that it had made their mental health much worse. 51% agreed that it had made their mental health a bit worse. 9% agreed that it had made no difference to their mental health, excuse me. 6% said that their mental health had become a bit better. 1% said that their mental health had become much worse. Among the respondents who were accessing mental health support in the lead-up to the crisis, including from the NHS, school and university councillors, private providers, charities and helplines, 74% said that they were still getting some level of mental health support despite the immense challenges services are facing. 26% of young people who had been accessing support said they were not currently able to access support. Next slide please. The Young Minds COVID-19 Summer 2020 Survey, second survey of young people investigating the mental health impact of coronavirus pandemic, shows that many are increasing or under increasing pressure and struggling to get the right support. Children and young people across the UK have had their lives turned upside down by the pandemic. Almost every young person's had to adjust to dramatic changes in their education or employment, routine and home life. Some have experienced bereavement or other traumatic experiences during the lockdown period, while others who were already marginalised or disadvantaged are now likely to become more so. Young Minds carried out a survey, a survey of 2,000 and 36 young people with a history of mental health needs between Friday 6th of June and Monday 5th of July, a period in which the government announced measures to ease restrictions, including the target for schools to reopen to all students in the autumn term. Next slide please Lance. Thank you. The, the Young Minds Survey 2020, the findings show that 80% of respondents agreed that the coronavirus pandemic had made their mental health worse. 41% said it had made their mental health much worse, up from 32% in the previous survey in March. This was often related to increased feelings of anxiety, isolation, a loss of coping mechanisms or loss of motivation. 87% of respondents agreed that they had felt lonely or isolated during the lockdown period, even though 71% had been able to stay in touch with friends. Among more than 1,000 respondents who were accessing mental health support in the three months leading up to the crisis, including from NHS, school, university councillors, private providers, charities, helplines, 31% said they were no longer able to access support still, that was still needed. Of those who had not been accessing support immediately before the crisis, 40% said that they had not looked for support but were struggling with their mental health. 11% of respondents said that their mental health had improved during the crisis and increased from 6% in the previous survey. This was often because it felt it was beneficial to be away from the pressures of their normal life. So for example, issues in school that they might have faced around bullying or the academic pressures of school with exams and so forth. Next slide please. The Autumn, Young Minds COVID Survey, COVID-19 Survey, Young Minds third survey where young people investigate the mental health impact of COVID-19 shows that many young people with mental health problems are struggling to cope as they return to secondary school after the months of living through COVID-19 crisis. The pandemic has put a huge strain on many young people who are already struggling with their mental health because of the traumatic experiences, social isolation, a loss of routine and a breakdown in formal and informal support. The survey highlighted positive mental health and the initial return to school, which is seeing friends, having routine and seeing their teachers. However, many said that the rapid return to academic pressure after six months away was having a negative impact. Young Minds carried out the survey with 2,011 young people with a history of mental health problems between Friday 15th of September and Wednesday 30th of September, shortly after schools had reopened. Next slide please Lance. So the findings of the Autumn Survey show that 69% of respondents described their mental health as poor now, that they are back at school. This has risen from 58% who described their mental health as poor before returning to school. 40% of respondents said that there was no school council available to support students in their school. Only 27% had had one-to-one conversation with a teacher or another member of staff in which they were asked about their wellbeing by the time they'd completed the survey. Almost a quarter of respondents, 23%, said that there was less mental health support in their school than before the pandemic, while only 9% agreed that there was more mental health support. Next slide please Lance. Thank you. So looking at the estimated numbers in Gedlin, so the estimated numbers of children and young people with any mental disorder in Gedlin aged 5 to 19, males 1,293, female 1,227, and all 2,520. This, I believe, was taken during the period 2019-2020 and the sources from the Joint Strategic Needs Assessment, which was presented to the Health and Wellbeing Board in January of this month actually. Next slide please. Estimated numbers of 18 to 25 year olds with any mental health disorder in Gedlin, male 464, female 1271, or 1735. Again, this was sourced from the Joint Strategic Needs Assessment, the Mental Health Report on Children and Young People, January. Next slide please. Number of patients contacted by each CAMHS team in South Nottinghamshire, which includes Gedlin for the 2019-2020 financial year, was 12,285. Again, this was sourced from the GSNA report that was recently presented to the Health and Wellbeing Board. Okay, so in terms of mental health and counselling services for young people in the borough of Gedlin, I'm just going to go through a few slides about, you know, of, of some of the services that are around currently and what's on offer. Thank you. So we have NHS Nottinghamshire Healthcare Child and Adolescent Mental Health Services, which is CAMHS. And CAMHS is the Child and Adolescent Mental Health Service, and they support children and young people up to the age of 18 who have problems with their thoughts or feelings. Parents' Care is for young persons aged 0 to 18 years old, but Nottinghamshire GP can refer on their behalf to CAMHS. This means that parents can directly approach their team to ask for help and there's a telephone number there and opening hours as well. Parents can speak to specially trained professionals who will ask some questions and talk to them about how they can help. And if preferred, parents' cares can ask for help by completing an online referral. If a parent care prefers, they can speak to the GP or school, a health nurse, get in touch with, with CAMHS as well. Any other professionals who works with a child or young person like a social worker, councillor or youth worker can also contact the team. Thank you. Next slide. CAMHS, this is just basically talking about CAMHS and what services are there within CAMHS. So we've got the Eating Disorders Team. We've got What About Me, which is called, wow, CAMHS Crisis at Home Treatment. So Intellectual Disability Team, Children Looked At and Adoption Team, Pediatric Management Team, Primary Mental Health Team, Subsistence Use Team and the LGBT plus service as well within that. Thank you. Thank you Lance. Okay, we also have Health and Families, Health and Families Team. And the Health and Families Team work with all children and young people, families aged 0 to 19 years old. They are made up of school nurses, health visitors and other health professionals. By working together, each of the family team members will support families and children in different ways, depending on the type of care that's provided. There's also a confidential texting service for 11 to 19 year olds in Nottinghamshire, which can be used. And you can also, again, there's a link there if you want to look at that on the website. There's a Parent Line texting service as well for issues that parents might be facing. There's a Chat Health line as well, and there's also a service for, for children and young people where they can text the school nurse. Thank you. Next slide. We've got We Are Here, who operate in Gedlin. Obviously, they have quite a lot of support around, but they're struggling. Again, We Are Here have taken up a lot of referrals. They're taking up a lot of referrals that aren't getting through to CAMHS. So they're seeing children and young people that have been waiting for CAMHS for quite some time. And that they are, you know, they have seen an uptick in referrals recently, particularly in the last six months. And also they offer quite a lot of support for parents and they offer specialist support and counselling, which is also through to access. Thank you. Positively Empowered Kids, this is mostly an online resource which can be used by professionals and parents and carers. You do have to set up an account to, to access the online wellbeing resources, but we're currently working with Positive Empowered Kids to see how we can expand upon their expertise and services within the borough to, to help us with some of the issues that we're currently facing during the pandemic. Thank you. Express Yourself again. This is a very, very useful service that we use with quite a lot of young children and young people within the borough. It aims to build confidence and self-esteem. It gives young people the chance to work with artists, to create something that, you know, that they're proud of, do quite a lot of artistic work. And they work a lot with a lot of young people and a lot of young people getting arts awards and qualifications and so forth. And they run in Punchestown, Nottinghamshire Council, and Gedlin Borough Council. And courses are open to people aged 13 to 17 who live either in Gedlin, Rushcliffe or Brockstow, so in the south of Nottinghamshire. They, they intend to support young people who need extra support with their mental health and also young people that might find it very challenging at school. Thank you. Ask Us Nottinghamshire is a very comprehensive local information and advice support service. It offers a range of advice from signpost and helpline support, one-to-one advice for intensive support for complex issues, including education, education healthcare plans, health and social care issues. They produce, quote, the IRS magazine, which provides information on local events groups and so forth and news. And they also have quite a lot of information prepared for children with SEND, which is Children with Special Educational Needs. Thank you. Keep Online Counselling. Again, this is a service that's, that's used a lot by a lot of young people. I know a lot of young people that use this service. It's a free online counselling service that offers emotional mental health support for children and young people. It's staffed by fully trained, qualified councillors and it's available Monday to Friday, 12 noon till 10 each night. And it also operates at the weekend from 6 to 10. So it's about 365 days a year. Thank you. There's also a link there that people can access. We have Health For Teens. This is again, this is another comprehensive area that young people can go and access against the website, but it has a huge amount of information on there where young people can look for advice and guidance around issues around growing up, how they're feeling about the health, the lifestyles, relationships, and also quite a lot of information around sexual health issues as well. Base51 Counselling Service, because I'm aware that, that there is quite a gap between young people leaving school and going into adulthood. There is a distinct lack of services for that age group in terms of counselling. But Base51 do offer counselling for, for young people aged 12 to 25 to talk about their troubles, explore difficult feelings and so forth. And that, you know, that, 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 they offer a comprehensive service to some people. And importantly, young people can, they can self-refer to that service. Again, there's links there as well that I've attached. Thank you. It's Children's Bereavement Centre. So the Children's Bereavement Centre is run by a committee team of friendly supported professionals. And again, they're qualified and they, they help a lot of young people with the grieving process. And they look at those issues in a, you know, in a very comprehensive way. They accept referrals for children aged between the ages of three and 18. And parents' care is affected by terminal illness there. They also accept referrals from professionals as well as self-referral. Again, there's a link there. Thank you. And then we have our youth service. We have our Young People Centres in Gedlin. Currently, they are operating at the moment, very limited, very limited in terms of the numbers they're allowed into the youth centres at the moment. So they're providing support, mental health, wellbeing support, sexual health support and, you know, basically they're for, 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 for young people to, to come along, make an appointment and, you know, providing guidance for them at this point in time. We have centres located in Arnold, Red Hill, one at Calvert and one at Netherfield, and we also have one at Newstead. Again, there's some bunnies there attached. But again, as I was saying, we're, we're very sort of restricted in terms of what we can do at the moment. But we are providing quite a lot of support and guidance at this point in time. Okay, that's the end of the slides. I will make sure that everybody gets those. So it's quite a comprehensive, very comprehensive PowerPoint preparation there. Thank you.
That, that was really interesting. Thank you, Henry. Lots of information about, you know, all the services available for the young, young people. Thank you very much. First of all, I can see Viv's got her hand up. Is there anyone from the committee that wants to speak for it? Or is this kind of on the same issue, Viv? Is this in addition to what I said?
More added information before you open up for, for questions. So it's just a little bit more I want you to add before you open up for questions, if that's okay Liz.
Yeah, okay, please go ahead.
Just to say that there was a M-Mental Health 2K, which is a peer-led young people's mental health consultation that the county launched in the summer and it concluded in November. And I just want to echo, obviously, what has all been said by Henry, because this brings it down from a national level to a local level because it was looking at the county. And, and they had over 160 respondents to this from, from, from the county's perspective around young people's mental health. And just to echo what Henry said, 70% of young people living in the county said that the pandemic was having a serious negative impact on their mental health. And it was interesting in terms of some of the areas that they were struggling with. And clearly things like sleep disorder, concentration, lack of consultation, isolation, depression were clearly the, the, the things that came out of the study. Accessing services was an area that quite a high percentage of them still struggled with. So, you know, it, it's good to see the, the volume of services out there. But from a local level, I think some young people were still struggling to be able to access those. And the other thing that was interesting, I thought, was is that there was a much higher uptake from females or completing than, than was males in terms of this survey. And it was interesting, your figures, Henry, because there was, in the 18 to 25s, there was a considerable dropout of young men accessing services. So, you know, I think it's an area to explore and it was quite a concern looking at this. And, and obviously for me as a portfolio holder for young people, we've got a consultation out that's going to be even more specific to Gedlin because it's then going to focus very much. So we've gone from a national study to a county. So we've gone from a national study to a county study to now looking at a Gedlin study so that we can really get to grips with the issues for our Gedlin young people. And that's currently going on, which is going to give us a lived experience for young people living in our borough on what the issues are for them. To help us then think about how we can advocate and support and challenge other services to ensure we get the absolute very best for our young people in, in the borough. So I think it all fits in quite well really with those bigger studies, with the county study, but now looking up at what we've got in terms of a borough. And I'm hoping that that will conclude at the end of January. So it will give us some ideas about the lived experience for Gedlin young people to look at and then to be able to work with our partners around planning to meet their needs. So I just wanted to add that on to Henry's presentation. Thank you Chair.
Okay, thank you Viv. Right, I've got Sandra, Mike and Paul, so Sandra first, please.
Thank you very much Chair. I just want to say it was a really good presentation, thank you Henry. It's terribly sad statistics, I feel. And I do think that the young people do need more support and it's important we try to do our very best for them because they're our future at the end of the day. So thank you very much.
Okay, Mike?
Yeah, one or two things have come up. First one though, since Viv came on at the end, can I just check what populations we're talking about? Because Henry's was quite clearly young people who had got, were known to have mental health issues. Is the county one, you said all young people, is that all young people? Or is it young people with known mental health issues? Or is it a different sort of population?
No, I think the, the target group was the young people aged between the ages of 14 to 25. So it wasn't looking at young people that were accessing health.
So your result was not...
Yeah, ours wasn't specific to young people accessing services. It was, it was more of a cross cutting around the county one was 14 to 25. The borough one will focus again, not on young people that have got mental health, identified mental health issues. It will focus on the lived experience for our young people to see what the areas of, the areas that, that they think are areas that they feel confident with, areas that they struggle with. So it's much more open, but mental health will be part of that because it's part of everything that a young person's do. How they feel in terms of their emotional health is going to have an impact on all areas of their development. So it's much more wider, right?
Yeah, no, I just wanted to know whether the populations were the same or different and they're clearly different. Second thing is, if I remember rightly, very early on in, in Henry's talk, he mentioned that, I think it was 2017, so it's pre-pandemic, there was a, a big rise in young people accessing mental health services through A and E. And I wondered if there was any data as to why that would have happened? Because it was pre-pandemic, I can understand the effect of whatever mental health issues we've got in the society, put a pandemic on top and you're going to exacerbate that, you're going to make things worse. I mean, that, that is fairly clear. But I think he said 2017, now that was pre-pandemic and there was an increase in young people accessing mental health through A and E. And I, I would have thought at that time, they would have accessed mental health through their local GP practices or the local services in their area, rather than going to A and E unless those services had disappeared from their local area. Do we have any information on that?
Henry, do you want to answer?
Can we back on that? Yeah, at that point in time, there was, as I was saying, there was a huge amount of young people being referred through to the Child and Elder and Health Services, but unfortunately they were waiting months, months and months and months and months. Some of them were waiting 18 months before, before they got any help whatsoever. And that unfortunately led to quite a sharp increase in, in young people actually ending up at A and E before they actually had access to those services.
That's it.
Yeah, thank you.
That's, that's what I wanted to put my finger on because, because basically what we're saying is that pre-pandemic, we, we had cut and cut and cut to the point where in fact, mental health services with the best will in the world really couldn't cope with the needs of young people. To, to overlay then a pandemic on top of that, you don't need a brain to realise that it's all going to fall apart and things are going to get worse and worse. What we need to do is we need, we need surely to make sure that coming out of the pandemic, we provide the services that were taken away before the pandemic because they were exacerbating a problem that we had anyway. The pandemic just made it worse. I mean, basically this, I hate to say it, but this is a government problem, you know, and it's a funding issue. And, and until that's made right, we are always going to have, what, what for me, looking at it, is a problem that would be much better dealt with and cost far less if there was an effective working service when the issue is presented. It's no good saying to somebody with a mental health disorder, yes, well, in two or three weeks you'll be able to see somebody who'll talk to you and then maybe 10 or 15 weeks after that, you, you, you might get a bit of talking therapy or, or whatever it is. Because by then, you know, they're going up the wall. I mean, it's, it's just, that, that's probably a bad phrase, but, but it's just not fair. And, and it is, it is letting our young people down across the board and it's meaning that they're having to do exactly what Henry just said, turn up at A and E saying, look, I'm desperate. What's the situation? What sort of health services are that?
Mike, we move on to the, can we move on to the next question? People waiting that, so Paul, Paul Feeney next please.
Hi, thank you, thanks Henry. Just, obviously the current situation at the moment is a COVID-19. I just wonder if you gave us a local update on what we've done in the borough to combat it? What we've done with vaccine and everything? Because I don't live very far away from Richard Herod and I've never seen those huge queues down the road. So we must be actually exceptionally successful. And is there anything else that we want us to do to, and are we going to have any other places made into vaccination centres? Just a general update on the situation please.
Okay, yeah, yeah. Yeah, the, the vaccination service at the Richard Herod has been absolutely phenomenal and the over 80s have been taking up and going there quite a lot. So it has been very successful. I believe there's also recruitment drive for volunteers to help roll out the vaccination nationally and also locally. I, I, I couldn't actually give you the answer as to when they'll build the centres up and running, but what I should imagine is that local GPs should be available to provide vaccinations. And also there is talk of one or two of the pharmacies in the supermarkets being able to deliver the vaccination as well. But if I get that information, obviously I'll provide that. But at the moment, obviously the Richard Herod is proving to be exceptionally successful and the vaccine is being taken up, you know, it's, it's, it's like gold dust to be honest. People are going there, taking appointments and going in and, you know, the more people can get vaccinated, the better. So I would say that, you know, i- i- if you can volunteer your, your, your services at any time, that would be most welcome as well. Obviously you get trained in, 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 in the era of delivery and so forth. But yeah, if I get that information, I'll forward that to you, thank you.
Yeah, it's just a matter of people keep asking me how many people have been vaccinated there? What percentage in the borough have been vaccinated?
I couldn't give you...
I'll, I'll...
Yeah, I couldn't give you...
Just let you know, but...
Yeah.
No, it's local statistics coming out.
It's a, it's a question I can ask, I can ask the local clinical commissioning group as to what the numbers are presently. So I can ask that question and then I can get that answered to you at some point in the near future. Thank you.
Right, thank you.
Thank you. Next, we've got Sam Smith, next please.
Thank you Chair. Henry, just on your housing part of your portfolio and housing needs, Gedlin Borough spent £220,000 on temporary accommodation last, in 1920. And I understand the government gave the council £311,000 at the end of last year to try and address that. Can you update us on what that funding's gone to so we don't get a big bill next year for temp accommodation?
Okay, yeah, the funding that we've got at the moment, obviously we've, we've, we've been putting that funding in to prevent rustle. But also, there's work ongoing at the moment to, to increase the amount of temporary accommodation we've got. Because the issue in Gedlin at the moment is we don't have enough temporary accommodation. So work is ongoing at this moment and I can tell you that we will be increasing our temporary accommodation and indeed I think it has increased already. But that money will be spent on prioritising, reducing our bed and breakfast bill for a start and, and looking at alternative means of accommodating people. Because the last thing we should be doing, putting people in bed and breakfast, that should be the last resort at the end of the day. So we are, we have work ongoing at the moment. I'm very confident that the housing needs team, Paul Wethworth, are doing an absolutely fantastic job under extremely difficult circumstances and they have been drawing up plans to, to, to increase that accommodation. And they're also talking with local resident social landlords as to how they might do that. But more importantly, I think it's important that we have our own as well.
Yeah, and then, well, if, if I might say as well, we had a, we had a quite comprehensive report on that in the last, the last overview and scrutiny meeting, which was very comprehensive, I thought. So we're moving on to Des, who's got the next question, Des Givens.
I, I, yeah, yeah, it's, it's just sort of like my education. You've mentioned like, like two studies, both, I'm, I'm, I'm guessing it's county and Gedlin sort of level around the effects on young people. I just wonder on the, on, on these figures, whether, whether they actually drill down to groups such as the BAME community and disability to see whether they are disproportionately affected in those groups. It seems to me, it, it's a good opportunity to sort, to sort of like drill down and get those figures when, when there's such a large survey being taken place. Thank you.
Viv, do you want to answer that one?
Please.
Just to say, the figures I've got from the county, the figures I've got from the county-led consultation with young people said that 14.4% of the young people that responded to the survey was from the BAME community.
Okay, I could see Mike's got his hand up again, but Dave Wakelin has as well. So I'm just going to nip on to Dave Wakelin in case he's got something to add to something we've already discussed. Dave?
Thanks Chair, it was just to add to councillor Wheeler's answer when replying to councillor Feeney. The CCG are at the moment working with us on a plan to implement a small number of additional vaccination stroke testing. We'll tell of that later.
Oh, okay, great, yeah. So councillor Hope, do you want to come back in again?
Yeah, actually, I, it, it's the problem with Zoom, isn't it? Because actually I want to comment on something that Paul said as well.
Oh, sorry, carry on.
Yeah, but we, we, you, you're not having a discussion, you're having to take it in turns. And, and, and it was, it was this really, it was raised to me by a friend and I thought, he's absolutely right. His point was, I'm sure Richard Herod's doing a brilliant job. But actually, if for example, you set up centre in Calvert and Village Hall, and I know I'm, I'm selling Calvert and Village Hall to you, but you could actually ensure that all of the villagers, Woodborough, Lambly, all the villages around us no longer had to go into Arnold in order to access those. And there's an excellent bus route which, which actually drops people right outside the park gate. That, you know, the point, the point is that this would have a strong, you know, a strong benefit, not only to Calvert but to, but to all the villages in the area. Save them going into the Richard Herod. And from, from your point of view, it would mean you probably could access, it's now the over 70s we're going for, isn't it? Much quicker and much more easily. I don't know. And the other thing is, the village hall, because of its designs, I thought about it afterwards, you actually could go in one way, park yourself with loads of space in the hall, go through and get your, your injection and not go out the way you came in, but go straight out through the French windows and, and disappear back home again. So, you know, may, maybe the CCG should be looking at some of these alternatives. I wouldn't know who to mention it to, honestly.
Yeah, I, I, I'm sure, obviously that's something that Dave can, Dave Wakelin can mention to the CCG, but I, I totally agree. And I know Gary Gregory is also looking at the possibility of community centres being used at some point in the future as well. So we're looking at all those possibilities because the more places you have to roll that vaccine out, the better it will be in the longer term.
Okay, can I, can I come in on that? Mike, you, you have to have not only the space to administer the vaccinations, but also waiting space for people who can be socially distanced.
Yeah.
Yeah, for 20 minutes.
Yeah, yeah, that wouldn't be a problem. It, it, it is a, it's, it's a big main hall and it can be nicely divided right down the middle. So you, you've probably got seating for maybe 40 socially distanced. And the important thing is, is when you had the injection, there is absolutely no reason to go back through the people who are coming in. You simply go out without seeing who's come in, you know, you get, it, it's, it's a, a one-way system all the way round and out.
Mike, just to say, you have to skip around for 15 minutes before you're discharged.
Well, in which case you'd have to block off another little bit.
Yes, you do.
And make the access air, I mean, th- these things are all possible, aren't they? It, it's, it's a big space and it's rather nicely set out for flow.
I think, I think Dave, Dave Wakelin will probably be able to answer that question in, 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 you know, a bit better than I could. But I'm sure those, those issues are being looked at in the different villages and, and also some of the other areas that we could look at. But I'm sure Dave will come in on that at some point, thank you.
Yeah, do you want to comment on that now Dave?
Thank you Chair, I mean, you know, the complexity of organising this, you know, you're, you're discussing now and this is obviously what's at centre and square of the CCG's plans. So there is a real stringent approval process for premises used for vaccinations and testing. And it's worked through Henry Lance and myself feeding some of the comments in to the CCG. But it's done on a local and regional basis, the approval of premises because of those clinical requirements that members have talked about on the screen. But I think it's fair to say with confidence that, you know, our collective efforts at the Richard Herod Centre, if that's anything to go by, has been first class. You know, no wasted vaccine, plenty of people going through the door, a well thought through council-supported plan, which I'm sure you're all proud of.
Yeah, Paul Feeney, councillor Feeney, have you got a new question or is your hand still up from before? You're on mute.
I was just going to make a comment on that because as regards the Richard Herod, it was quite busy on Sunday. And I just wondered if they were going to develop the Richard Herod to, as you go 24 hours.
Ah, so, so is, is that something you can reply to now Dave or not?
No, well certainly they're, they're extending and have extended the, the, the hours Chair, whether they'll go down to 24, certainly for phase, these first four cohorts, which are people over 80, it's probably not a good plan to, to get people out 24 hours when you're that age. But certainly as they start vaccinating the younger population and the working population, Paul's comment about, you know, extending even more, 24 hours may not be possible. But I think that is something that will be actively in the planning. You know, for working age adults, you know, nine till five is not great, but you know, six till 11 at night might be very good. So I think the point's well made and that won't be lost on the planners, councillor Feeney.
Yeah, apologies Lance, you've had your hand up for a little while, I think.
Hi, just to respond to councillor Hope's question, we have had a qu-
We have had a query into the council from a resident, actually, on that very issue. So we're forwarding that on to the CCG, who are managing the vaccination centre, just so they're aware of that proposal and idea from the community.
Okay. Councillor Sam Smith.
Yeah, thank you Chair. Just on the, Dave alluded to earlier about not wasting vaccines. A resident contacted me a few days ago, who was booking their parent on to an appointment at Richard Herod and saw there were like 30 odd appointments available for their next day, and asked me how we were ensuring those vaccines weren't going to waste, because I think we're using the one that goes off after two days. And I know that Mike Hill told me we gave them to the council workers in the first week, and then the police the last week. Is there a plan in place to ensure things don't go to waste? And how's that being done, and who's being prioritised for that?
Dave, do you want to answer?
Yeah, I mean, I can answer that the best I possibly can, councillor Smith. I mean, it's very much being controlled by the CCG and the collisions on site. It's not a Gedling decision. I mean, we're assured at Gedling, and I think this came out when there was a conversation in the media by their leader councillor Clark, that actually at Gedling and across Nottinghamshire, there's been very little wasted vaccine. You know, you're talking, I think a file has four armsful in it, to be honest. And you're talking small numbers of what the CCG have, I think, properly done is to just use the occasional and odd vaccine that's not used to local emergency staff, which is include our own staff that are operating the centre, which strikes me as being a really wise choice rather than wasting it. I don't think, Sam, there's been the amount to do anything of any scale with it. But I do know a couple of centres outside of Gedling, where they're dealing with bigger quantities over a longer period, they have put calls out for local people, you know, particularly those which are in the next cohort, which is those providing Dumseri care. So care workers that are travelling from address to address, they have been putting calls out for them to come in and have the vaccine perhaps a little ahead of time. But I think, you know, we were reassured, Lance and myself and councillor Wheeler, that based on the staff, the information we're getting from our staff on the ground, who have got a good working relationship with the CCG staff doing the vaccination work, that actually, there's very little going to waste, and people are turning up for appointments, even though the weather's been grim, and it's the eldest population that are coming forward, which is obviously extremely encouraging for all of us. Thank you.
That's good, thank you.
Thank you very much. Councillor Boyle.
Thank you very much Chair. I want to go back, if I may, to the presentation that Henry has given us. And it has been, you know, well received and comprehensive, and I thank him for it. My question is about how the things, things have shifted. I mean, we had, we've had government ministers quite often saying that the priority is to keep schools open because of the effect on young people's mental health. And they've pushed that argument sometimes to the irritation of the National Education Union, who don't feel that so much school, school opening is safe. And of course, the second variant of a virus has, in the UK, has kind of put paid to some of those plans to keep them, keep them open. However, there has been quite a lot of schools taking more people this time than in the first phase of lockdown, on the grounds of vulnerability and other factors. And I wondered how much of that was perceived problems with mental health being part of that. So that's my first question. The second question really is about what kind of shift in resources or extra resources or the need to reconfigure resources has they been to support young people who may now be at home, possibly in vulnerable situation, that don't have the let out of going to schools because they're at home, because either they, you know, their parents or parent is not a key worker, and they haven't got that place at school, and therefore feeling much more isolated and more difficult to get hold of services. Whether there's been any sort of consideration or reconfiguration of services with the, with the provision. Of course, all these things is a question of resources. And that's where I sort of agree with councillor Hope when he made his contribution. He made quite a lot of the points I would have otherwise have made on, on the provision. That it's been a problem that's been building up for a very long time, pre-austerity. And actually, the pandemic has made the mental health provision outlook for the whole country much, much worse.
Okay, Henry?
Yeah, I'll come in on that one, obviously, because I've worked throughout the pandemic at home and school every day of the week, apart from holidays, obviously, when it's half term. And also, I've been in the youth centres, the youth centres are still open, as I say, but to a very limited number of young people. I can tell you what I do for my job. My job is to contact vulnerable young people that are at home. These will be the SEND or social care children that are extremely vulnerable. But obviously, it's limited capacity. There's only so many people, staff, should we say, to go around to do that job in each school. I, I mean, in school at the moment, we have roughly, I'm not going to mention the school I'm at, but there's around about 100 students on site at any one time at the moment, which is more than there was actually during the summer when there was no lockdown. And you're talking roughly 20, 20 in a year group, but up to 40 in another year group. So the younger year groups tend to be the ones where we have more people in. The older the year groups, we tend to have less people in. But if I'm not working with the children of key workers or some of the more vulnerable ones who are actually on site, that might be in social care or in care, I will be spending most of my time ringing parents up and making sure that young people are accessing online resources. But not just looking at online resources, checking on emotional wellbeing, mental health, making sure they're okay, talking to them, counselling them. It's just, not just the children. Finding myself counselling sometimes, sometimes as a parent, I'm talking to about their health needs and about issues they're facing with the situation. Because it has to be said, mental health is going to have a huge issue on young people, but also it's going to have a massive impact on all age groups across society. All age groups across society is going to have a big impact. But yeah, from a school's perspective, obviously, there's certainly not enough technical equipment going out. Certainly not enough. By far, there's not enough technical equipment on home. A lot of children, some children haven't got access to laptops. That's why there's lots of appeals going out for laptops. Yes, there has been some laptops supplied, but not enough, which is why, as I say, some schools are appealing for more. But yeah, there is a lot of work behind the scenes with a lot of professionals trying to make sure that young people are safe. The biggest, another big problem we have at the moment, also, in terms of young people that might fall for the news, there are all issues around safeguarding in terms of counter knives and grooming, drug dealing. All those issues are huge issues that young people are going to be exposed to. You know, during the pandemic. And I know there were issues before the pandemic, never mind. There were issues before the pandemic. But also, there's issues around sexual abuse, there's issues around domestic violence. There's massive issues that are ongoing on a lot of children, young people and families. But yeah, I can only speak from my perspective in terms of what I've been doing throughout the lockdown and throughout the summer, as my experience. But professionals are working really, really hard on the ground to try and protect young people in school as well. Because, you know, but also all those that are out of school. But there's only so much you can do, you know, it's really difficult. There's only so many people that can go around. And again, there are safeguarding teams in schools that are in contact with social care every day of the week. But there are referrals coming through all the time, or referrals being made all the time to the multi-agency service or at county. There's a lot of work behind the scenes going on to protect our most vulnerable children, and also to ensure that children of key workers get an education. But also to ensure that, you know, SENDs, children with special educational needs, you know, who will be struggling at home with online learning. Because sometimes the work they will be sleeping, it won't be, you know, the work's not going to be differentiated like it might be in a school. You know, so they might find that work a lot more harder than they would do normally. And again, that's an area where myself and other professionals will be looking at, looking at how that work can be done in a way that a lot of young people with special educational needs might be able to act. It's making education accessible at the end of the day. I could go on, I think I should.
Thanks, Henry. Councillor McCrossan.
Yeah, just to, if I could just add, councillor Boyle, to your, your question. Part of what you were talking about was about, you know, have we got sufficient services? Can we really, you know, can we reallocate services, et cetera? I mean, if we just hold on to the fact that CAM, so Child and Adolescent Mental Health Service is a responsibility of health, is a health budget responsibility. Before the pandemic started, we had a struggle with CAM services. We know that. I mean, although I'm your portfolio holder, for over 10 years, I ran CAM services. So I have a good understanding and a good knowledge about CAM services. And we were struggling with the numbers of children needing services through a CAM's service. So as local authorities, what tended to happen was that local authorities tended to use their budget in terms of children's social care budgets, and schools use their education budget to try to provide early intervention services. Because actually, to get a child allocated to a CAM's service was very difficult. As you know, we've had 10 years of austerity, and that austerity has eaten away at local authorities in terms of social care services and education services, being able to provide some of these services because they have other things that they have to prioritise. So we've had 10 years of austerity. That has truly made a huge, had a huge effect on what we can provide in terms of the emotional health and wellbeing of young people. I think when we looked at the budget, I think you're looking at less than 1% of the health budget is spent on child and adolescent mental health services. So I think we have to, you know, put that into some context around. And I absolutely agree with Henry. The people on the ground are doing their absolute best to provide a service. But I know from the county study that young people were saying that they were waiting more than three months for an appointment for a CAM service. And then it was relying, does the schools have any counselling or support services? You know, is the local children's social care services able to provide anything in terms of support? And then we come down to charities. And if we look at the tremendous charity we've got on our doorstep, which is We Are Here, that in essence is there to support families. That's their key client group is families. But they've seen more and more young people asking for support. Their budget is tiny. They have a tiny budget. It's a charity. They have to rely on us as councillors supporting them. We support them as a borough as well. And then they have to spend most of their time writing bids to get lottery funding, et cetera, et cetera. So there's an excellent charity on our doorstep that could be doing more for young people. But again, you know, there's very limited funding. It's an area, child and adolescent mental health is an area that has been starved of funding for years and years and years. And then we have a pandemic. And we don't need to say anything more in terms of the pressure that young people are under and families are under with poverty, with domestic violence, with all sorts of other things that are happening within families that children are trying to cope with.
Yeah. Thanks councillor McCrossan. I guess, from my point of view, I was trying to think, what, what can, what can Gedling Borough do more? You know, to help, certainly as we come out of the pandemic, if you don't mind me asking a question from the Chair. You know, what, what can we do to help things better after the pandemic, as we come out of the pandemic? Do you think councillor Wheeler?
I certainly think in terms of, obviously, I know councillors have a resource, like the community budget fund that we have. I certainly think we should be looking at ensuring that any, any charities locally, voluntary charities locally that work with children and young people, receive some funding from councillors' community parts to ensure that they're able to carry out some of the functions that they do with, with children and young people moving forward. I mean, because that allows them sometimes to, you know, certainly allows them to perhaps come into schools and do some counselling on an individual one-to-one basis. But also, I think, given the fact that they're reliant purely on voluntary donations or limited budgets, I think any amount of money that we spare, particularly through the councillors' budget, the community fund, would be very, very helpful at this point in time, moving forward. I also think, in terms of, I mean, obviously, it's a big issue because obviously Gedling Borough Council isn't the upper tier authority in terms of delivery of children's, children and people's services. Also doesn't have responsibility for the, the health provision in the same way that the clinical commission group does, or the, you know, public health does. But I certainly think every little, in terms of what little money that we do have as councillors on the ground from our parts, does help. So when you provide a bit of funding to We Are Here, that's actually helping We Are Here see another child, for example, yeah? It's also helping, so for example, when we give money to the Arnold Mental Health Prefending Scheme, that's, that's a bit of funding then that adds to their ability to deliver a mental health service to adults in the community. So, so, okay, you know, it's not a huge amount of money that we have, but that bit of money that we do have does actually help significantly when we provide those, we support to those voluntary organisations in our community. Because all too often, it is the voluntary sector that is actually picking up the pieces that the statutory sector isn't doing or delivering at the moment. Thank you.
Okay. Well, from the Chair here, I know I've got Dave Wakelin with his hand up, but can I come to you in a minute, Dave, if you've got a different question than before? Oh, you've took your hand down now, that's okay. And so on that, on that note, Henry, would it be, would it be useful? I don't know if it's the appropriate time to say, or would it be useful for you to suggest to us some organisations who might appreciate some help from councillors' pots? Is that, is that appropriate, guys, I think? Appreciate that.
Yeah, yeah, definitely.
Because I know especially in this, in this year, where we've had a limited, almost a limited use of what we can have. You know, people haven't been going on trips, they haven't been, you know, doing things together as, you know, as organisations. You know, that would, from my point of view, that would be a great use of councillors' pots.
I'll give you an example. So for example, some of the schools have small gardening projects, which, you know, like little allotment projects. And actually, the small gardening projects, you know, are very good from an emotional, social, mental health point of view. But it only takes like, you know, a couple of hundred quid to buy a few, you know, to buy seeds and equipment, you know, pots and tools. You know, it's a small amount of money, but it goes a huge, you know, it does a huge amount in terms of children, young people's mental health and wellbeing. Gardening has a huge impact on children, young people in terms of emotional wellbeing. Also, I know from the youth service perspective, obviously, a lot of the young people haven't been on trips for months. You know, you know, if they get, so for example, say, a youth charter organisation that's working with young people gets a bit of money, you know, then that organisation is then able to take them away for trips to say, I don't know, Old Town Towers or somewhere like that when they're open. Like, you know, it's little things like that really that help boost that, 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 you know, just gives them a boost, it makes, makes, makes young people, gives them something to look forward to. And again, again, like with the Arnold Mental Health Prefending Scheme, in terms of services for, for, for adults. Again, you know, if you provide funding for an organisation like that, that allows them to, again, provide trips and so forth to Whitby or somewhere like that, it makes a huge difference. I know it sounds like a small thing, but actually, small things make big differences.
Yeah. Okay, well, that's, that's really useful. Thank you. We'll have a conversation about that afterwards. Right, I've got nobody else with their hands up. Viv, did you want to say anything separately about your equalities?
Well, can I just say, just to end, because obviously, where Henry ends, I start in terms of portfolio for young people. And obviously, part of my role is, you know, it's portfolio with very little funding, or minuscule funding in terms of that role. So my role in essence is really around to advocate for young people in our borough and to ensure that actually all our partners are providing what they should be providing and to ensure that where there is gaps in provision, we lobby to make sure that there isn't. And I would go back to the question that you said, well, what can we do? Well, what we can do is, we can write to our MP, we can, you know, lobby in terms of what we need to be doing. But we need appropriate funding for child and adolescent mental health services. We need to have, it's all very
We need to have, it's all very well, the voluntary sector doing a sterling job. But ultimately, it's been a service that's been starved of funding for many, many years. And I think our job is to ensure that actually, we've got the right level of funding to support our young people. And like councillor Barnes has said, our young people are our future. And what, what we want is strong, resilient young people that can go into the workforce, that can hold down a job, that can hold down a tenancy, that can, you know, create, have a really positive impact on society, can build healthy relationships, you know, can, can really make a contribution to society. Well, to do that, we need resilience. At the minute, we've got many young people that are so anxious and worried that that's going to seriously impede them as they go through into adulthood and impede them now. And I mean, councillor Boy was saying about young people in schools. We know that actually there is a national and an international, but certainly a national crisis around young people, around education. And the gap between those that have and have not is growing and getting wider and wider. So we all have a responsibility to think about our young people. I've got the portfolio around young people and my job is to lobby to make sure these things are in place for young people. So I'm, you know, we've got a consultation out now. It's about ensuring that we hear their voices, that's part of it. We hear what they're saying, what the area, what the issues are for them. And we make sure that there is, you know, a fair playing field for young people in our, in our borough.
Yeah, and that's, yes.
Can I just add to that?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, sorry, councillor McCrossan is absolutely 100% right. I mean, obviously, for schools to function in the sense of providing, you know, the right services in terms of supporting social and emotional health, we need people in school trained in emotional literacy, you know, and in mental health to, to deliver sessional work on the ground. You know, we don't, you know, it's like, we don't want people waiting, young people waiting months and months and months to get
Yeah.
service, we need services in school delivering on the ground. But not just in schools, but also within the youth centres as well. We need services on the ground, as Viv, as councillor McCrossan's right to point it out. So, so for example, we need people trained up as ELSA guides and things like that, you know, which is ELSA is basically someone that's been trained to, to deliver an emotional literacy, mental health intervention for sort of six weeks within a school. You'd be lucky if you get one person doing that at the moment, you know, but we need several, we don't need just one, we need, we need more than one. We need several in each school, particularly the big schools as well. Thank you.
Okay, then I'm going to bring it to a close there, although I can see that councillor Hope has got his hand up. But just to make sure we are, we're talking about, you know, things that Gedling Borough can do really and scrutinising what's going on in Gedling Borough and things we can help with, rather than making this too much of a, we're, we're a non-political committee. So please, Mike, Hope, please go ahead, but bear in mind that point. You're on mute.
Yeah, no, no, I, I, I think this is, this is one for Henry. Because I've, I've just picked up that he's got council housing development under his brief, which I, I hadn't spotted earlier. And I've just picked it up. My question is, are, are we actually doing anything about providing council housing? I mean, I, I've noticed as I go through that in terms of building affordable housing, I thi, I think we are, our target is five and, and we've achieved zero.
Yeah.
So, so, I mean, that's a concern, but, but I, I actually feel that, that one of the ways forward is council housing. And it's, it's, it's a shame that it, it ever disappeared, but, but more importantly, it's something that's got to be brought back. Where are we with that?
Right, well firstly, it's not actually my portfolio.
Oh, is it not? Sorry.
No.
It's unfortunate, sorry, it's Jenny, isn't it?
Yeah.
Sounds like Hollingsworth.
Oh, I'll, I'll take it back.
We'll have it next time.
No, no, it's fine.
Yeah, it says under three two, it's in your portfolio.
It, it, it was removed, it was, it, it isn't, it, it was taken out quite some time ago, it was originally. But, but what happened was obviously, obviously, Jenny's got responsibility for housing delivery in terms of, you know, house sites and things like that, which is why it sort of went and shifted over towards Jenny in terms of council housing delivery. But that said, that said, obviously, I, I have a responsibility for housing needs. But to meet some of the needs around housing needs, I need some council housing desperately. And so, yeah, I, I, we, we are looking at the moment, we are looking at identifying areas where we can look at providing some council housing. I believe we can build up to, I'm sure, I think it was about 200 before we had to open up a housing revenues account or something like that. But we are looking at it, it's on the agenda and it's one that's moving up the agenda very fast. And I believe that Jenny's actually got some very advanced plans on that at the moment. But it's one question you might need to ask, ask her at some point. Thank you.
Yeah, no, no, that, that's right. I've, I've obviously looked at your portfolio elsewhere. And I just picked it up when I, I was flicking through the papers, under three two, definitely it's there.
Councillor Hope, councillor Feeney, you can have the, this is going to be the last question, councillor Feeney.
Just to keep on, on, on the same subject and reminding people that we got rid of our council houses in Gedling and then we sold them to what is now Gedling Homes or now moved on to Jigsaw. So the person who should give the report on council houses and how many houses have been built is councillor John Clark, who takes that out to the, the board of the Jigsaw. Though maybe as a scrutiny committee, we should, that sometime in the future, where you stick to just exactly what we require Jigsaw and Gedling Homes to do.
Okay, okay, well, thanks for that councillor Feeney. I think it's been a really great discussion with the, the two portfolio holders tonight. I hope you've all, I hope you've all got something out of that and we've certainly got some ideas for our council, for our community pots. Okay, so thank you councillor McCrossan, councillor Wheeler. Helen, do you want to come in at that point?
Councillor Clooney, there were a couple of questions on there about equalities.
I am sorry, hang on a minute.
Two questions below quarter two performance report for young people inequalities. It's about equality implications during turns.
What, apologies, what page are we on, Helen?
Yeah, it's page thirteen point three point eight.
I can read out that, I got an, I mean.
Yeah, carry on, yeah.
Yeah, the question was, I don't know, the question was, when choosing interns, are equality impacts taken into consideration? That's the question. And the answer is, we seldom now have interns. If we had a place that was paid, then we would advertise openly and apply the same on merit process as for employees, best matched against a range of criteria. We do not take, we do take on work experience placements, often from Nottingham Trent University, and some of which might be up to six months in the, in, if the, if there are a number of interested students, then they would be, go through an on merit process to apply for these posts. The second question was a question that came from the quarter two performance. Lance, you were going to speak to that.
Please carry on, Lance.
And that was about project management.
Yeah, there was, there was just a question around consideration of equalities in project management. So the councils currently are adopting a new project management process. And as part of that, there's just a reference in there around the importance to consider equalities impact assessments. And obviously, the various equality impact implications for the protected characteristics. So it's just built into that new framework now, the, the need to consider that assessment whenever we look to develop new projects.
Okay, great. Paul, is that a new hand councillor Feeney? You're on mute.
No, does it?
Okay, okay, that's fine. We've got a hand up from councillor Gibbons.
Yeah, yeah, it's what Lance touched upon. How do, how do we actually monitor the performance on that? Do we monitor it from previous years or are we sort of like starting from now and monitoring it? Thank you.
Yeah, in terms of the, the, the project management framework, it's around developing new projects. So in effect, if, if some specific equality implications is recognised through that, that planning, and there'd be an expectation to build in some monitoring into the project, there's moving forward, some milestones. So that's, that's how it would work in general.
Okay, right, cheers, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Helen, did you have something else to say or is it the same question?
And no, there was just an additional question about portfolio holders, sorry, about city policy advisers. That has been referred to councillor Clark, but I just wondered if either the portfolio holders wanted to say anything.
No, I think we agree with you Helen, that that was a question that needed to go to councillor Clark in terms of his role of setting up policy advisers. I've got nothing but positivity to say in terms of my policy adviser, Catherine, who's here with me, who works extremely hard. But I think in terms of the response, we've agreed that that should come from the leader.
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, so next time we'll be having councillor Hollingsworth will be with us. We can talk about council housing. And there'll be, you know, a chance for you to ask questions ahead of the, ahead of time as well. There's also mention of the Housing Delivery Action Plan. There was a link to that in this, in this time's papers. It's a very interesting and useful report to have a look at. So please make sure you have a look at that and then it might generate some questions for Jenny from you. Okay, so now we're going to move on to number five on the agenda. So if, you're welcome to stay or leave as desired, so. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Viv and Henry.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thanks to your cat, Henry, too. Okay. So now, now we're moving on to number five, antisocial behaviour trends, excuse me. This has come up as a, excuse me, but from last time's meeting with David Ellis. We asked for more information on this topic. So David Jane's going to give us a little presentation about antisocial behaviour in the borough. Thank you.
Good evening, can I just, I'm going to try and share just a few slides with you. So if you just bear with me one minute. We'll get to it.
Can I just say apologies, Des, I didn't see your hand there. You can comment, do you want to? Oh, you took it down, okay, sorry, David.
Sorry, Chair.
All right, sorry, I'm just trying to find the presentation now, so.
Oh, okay.
There we are. Hopefully you'll be able to see this, but it's, it should be coming up in a sec.
Not yet.
Slowly, 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 slowly.
There we go.
It's getting there, I promise, it's doing something on my side, so.
Yes, there we are, that's it, I can see it.
Right, so has everybody got sight of that? It's just a few slides, more as a reminder for me than, than anything else. So, but on the, the last meeting on the ninth of November, we were talking about a range of issues from the public protection portfolio. And although we've, we set up a separate group around the domestic abuse, we, because of the, the information that came in, I think at the time, there was a, a very large percentage recording of antisocial behaviour that we, that would have been reported from the police to us. So, and then, and councillor Ellis passed that, obviously, that information on. The question really was around, you know, how much is this impacted by the COVID? Because obviously in November, we'd had several months of COVID lockdown and restrictions. So we tried to do some digging on this and it's taken some time to get to. And now you may have actually seen some stuff in the press this weekend, in the Nottingham Post in particular, around increases in antisocial behaviour in the borough. There was a bit of flying around of people on Friday to get them in because they were running the article and they were also interviewing in the street. Which actually, when reading the article, it's not come out too bad and I think people are quite understanding of the situation that they're in. So what we've actually got here is, is just some information that I've got in terms of policing wise, what the problems have been and actually a little bit from our internal. So hopefully this will click through for me. So if you just bear with me, I'm hoping so. Come on. It doesn't want to do anything. Here we go, there we go, right. Sorry about this, it's, it's a bit slow, my computer at the moment. Police reports, so yes, we did have a significant increase, especially during April till June. And in April in particular, sort of massive increase in the, the reports to the police. A lot of these, when we've gone into it, were down to COVID-19 breaches. We also had running into the June side of it, it's picked up with the unseasonably warm weather. So people were at home, people were outside in their gardens and they were doing their gardening and all sorts of things. And you couldn't get your garden waste picked up and there's all sorts of, sorts of problems that people were, were reporting through. So overall, this actually led to a huge increase in the amount of noise nuisance reports that we had. And I'll come to that from the borough point of view in a minute as well. But then, within this period of time, I'm going to take it through right the way to where we are now. The post-lockdown gatherings that we had, and again, I'll pick up on this in, in shortly, where we had young people around because it was almost like a celebration of we're out of lockdown. And that causes some problems with a lot of calls coming in quite often about the same issue, but from several different sources reporting it in, especially on recreation grounds and parks. So the issue that the police had actually got is that when the, when we went into lockdown, the police systems do record ASB, but it's got predefined categories and there isn't as many as we have as an authority. But there was nothing in there as COVID-specific. So all the breaches that reported and all the concerns that were raised for noise nuisance and loud music and antisocial behaviour and Joe's meeting Fred in, on the street and he's talking within, is, is within two metres. All that stuff just went down on the police record as antisocial behaviour. The position we're in now, and it's obviously trying to get a, a huge increase down, over time, we do, we've looked over it and it's been going down month on month, the levels of incidents, really from about August time. To say, we did have an increase, the, especially around the June-July time, when people were, were out and about and, and partying a little bit. So, but this is something, it is coming down, it's come down an awful lot now. But I don't, well, we, we're pretty sure that we won't get this back to last year's level. But what we are doing is, is seeing that the, the incidents that we had last year, the type of stuff is much lower. But it is the COVID that has caused the, the problems here, so. In terms of local authority reports, this backs up a little bit about what the, what the police are saying. We've seen increased reports and I've picked specifically on noise nuisance. So for the period 2019 to 20, that's a, that's a 12-month period, we had 324 noise nuisance reports. Between April and December of last year, we had 407. So there's a marked increase there and we weren't even at the end of the year. And in terms of general antisocial behaviour, the same for that, for that same period again, and this is, you know, noise nuisance, neighbour disputes, that type of thing as well. We had 144, but for the April to December, there were 157, so it's an increase again and we're not at the end of the, of the financial year. So we're lucky because we do have the systems in place to record the specific types of behaviour. And we, we actually allow it to be for the allocation to the correct service. And that's why our system's different to the policing, I believe, you know, it's, the police have enough different crime types, I think, to report without breaking antisocial behaviour down to the same levels as we do. In terms of what came out of it then, with, with intervention plans and activity, during this whole period of time, we've had the police powers, we've used fixed penalty notices for breaches on the street, but also house parties and garden parties, that type of thing. So, and they're increasing in the amount number that's going out at the moment. And also they've been forcing in terms of the licensing side of things with the police licensing and our licensing. When it's been required, we've used antisocial behaviour legislation, we've used a dispersal order in the past where necessary to keep young people in particular out of Arnold Town Centre, was the main focus that Chris Pearson, the inspector, had to deal with. But obviously, we've also got the, the closure orders that we've looked at in terms of. But obviously we've also got the closure orders that we've looked at in terms of retail premises. And that includes the work that we did on mustard seed, which actually did itself actually generate quite a few antisocial behaviour reports coming in. We've used environmental health legislation around noise and bonfires. And our bonfires aren't specifically listed, but for the first, you know, couple of months in particular, the amount of bonfires as people were clearing out the garden, didn't have any waste management, any garden waste collections. They were just burning at home. And this has caused, obviously, it was all still green there and it caused a lot of problems within the community and reporting through. Did actually go through the roof. But they were all dealt with through the environmental legislation. We actually put in place a multi-agency plan regarding the use of nitrous oxide, which went up on the open spaces. This was, say, that they came out of lockdown and we had large groups of sometimes 30, 40, 50 young people on places like Newstead Abbey Park, on Colick Recreation Ground, on King George V. They were, we actually picked this up because of the outreach service that was working, as well as our refuse, street parks and street carts, sorry, picking up the little canisters that you can get. So we had to put a plan in place for that because we were getting multiple reports. And that brought together lots of different agencies, including the city council. And we got the message out there about, you know, the dangers of this as well. But it was linked to alcohol, cannabis use, use of nitrous oxide in large groups. We've got the youth outreach workers and they are still doing some work out there at the moment. But it's very, very much limited now because of obviously restrictions. You can't do the one to one work. You can't work with groups because they shouldn't be in groups. They shouldn't really be out. You know, in any form of groups apart from, you know, if it's usual essentials. So we've lost some of that. And as councillor Weir's already mentioned, some of the youth work is is very, very limited that we've got in centres. And that's really for those where we've identified a real need for those young people. But it is there for those where there is a real need. I've put the speed cameras, speed cameras were deployed because obviously we've got, it came up as the number one priority on when we actually reevaluated our three main strategic objectives. And I think councillor Ellis mentioned this on the November meeting. It was the burglary, it was the substance misuse and supply. But then it was the top came top from the community was the amount of speeding that was around. So I don't know, I can't, I haven't got figures on exactly how many people have actually been caught on this. But the police have still been running their speed campaigns and putting, they've been like Calverton, Ravenshead, Gedling, all sorts of places where they've been actually putting speed cameras out. I'm thinking Ravenshead, for example, had quite a big, made quite a big difference because there were on Longdale Lane, I think it was, they, they were picking up speeding vehicles the first time they did. The second time, there was no speeding vehicles at all. And unfortunately, some of the speeding vehicles were local residents as well. And this is what we find in some of the other areas. It's not those coming through the areas. It's not your boy races or anything. It's just people who are pushing it because they, you know, the roads are clearer. And then in terms of the intervention plans and activities, the last one is really the work we've been doing, we're still doing with Covid marshals, wardens and CCTV. There is obviously an increased visible presence because we've got people out uniformed or in harvest jackets. And there's less people around. But what it means is some of the breaches, they're less, we're getting less of the breaches reported because the presence, people know that they're being watched. But also the wider antisocial behaviour issues, and yes, we have had some problems in Arnold with young people. But the presence again of the marshals, of the neighbourhood wardens and of the use of the CCTV, which has been extremely effective, especially as I say, in Arnold Town Centre and has also been used in Netherfield on Victoria Road. We had a few problems there. And that's made a huge impact actually on the, you know, the general. I wouldn't, I hate to say it, but the day to day antisocial behaviour that we would have expected if we weren't in a Covid situation. So yeah, it's overall, I suppose it's something, it is actually, Covid's had a massive impact. We are still serving fixed penalty notices. But what we find now is if you ring 101, you'll find that there is a separate link if you wish to report Covid breaches. And they go to a separate team and that's investigated. Now exactly where that goes, I'm not sure. But yeah, it's something, I live in Leicestershire and we've done the same here. So I think most police are actually doing that now. So that is probably having another impact on our figures coming down as well. So that's just a quick summary. So there was, just opening up for any questions now at all.
Thank you, David. I've got councillor Rachel Ellis.
Thank you. Yes, and that was very comprehensive, David. Can you clarify whether our experience of a rise in ASB is, if you like, in step with the experience of surrounding authorities?
It is. Yes, councillor, it is. It's, I would say that Brockston and Rushcliff have seen, you know, quite similar sorts of increases. Obviously their baseline is going to be different, Rushcliff in particular. And their geography is very different, obviously, as well. But when you actually compare across Nottinghamshire and the region and nationally, they've all seen big increases. And again, there was a follow up article in the Nottingham Post at the weekend that highlighted the increases that they'd seen in the city. They gave October and November figures as a comparison from 2019 to 2020 and they did it by ward. But they put it in there and it showed marked increases in those areas. So it is something that we've seen definitely across South Nottinghamshire and the city.
Thank you.
I've got councillor Paling next.
Totally sorry about the delay Chair. I've just noticed that my battery is running very low. So I was trying to fix that at the same time. A simple question. I get updates from Chris Pearson and I just wanted to check that all the other councillors did because that included quite a lot of detail about speeding in the last quarter. And if people are getting them, they can ask for that.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Barnes.
Thank you Chair. I just wanted to ask David, how much power have Covid marshals actually got? Because I was asked that when I had a meeting online with Mapley Rotary Club. And I weren't sure, but I said, I'm sure that they would, you know, pass on the information and get something done. So I'd like to go back to them if I could. Thank you.
That's one I'm not exactly sure of the powers. If Mr Wakelin's here still on the call, I can't see. So.
Yes, I can answer that David. Yeah, councillor Martin Sandro, so the Covid marshals that we've employed are a security firm that's been additionally trained by the company to provide that marshalling function. So they don't have enforcement powers, but what they have done, well, what they do do through the training and the arrangement we've got with them, it's a branch of Magpie Securities. They report back breaches to us. So we are deploying and managing their tasking on a daily basis now. And sending them to areas where we have been told there are breaches or where there are, for example, you know, people congregating outside shops and socially distancing, we're putting the marshals in those areas. And they are feeding back to Sam Palmer and Kevin Nealan where they feel that there's sort of enforcement attention and action is needed. But per se, they don't have legal powers.
Right.
They are absolutely assisting in that gathering of information to point our staff in the right direction who do have those enforcement powers. Thank you.
Thank you very much indeed. Thank you.
Okay, I've got nobody else with their hand up at the moment, but please shout if you want to speak and you can't put your hand up. There was silence. So your report was very comprehensive, David, and thank you very much for that information. And okay, so now we'll move on to point six, which is the Gedling Plan Quarter Two. And Dave Wakelin's going to give us a few pointers about the Gedling Plan Quarter Two.
Yes, thank you Chair. And happy to take questions at any point throughout the presentation, which will be brief because you've got the papers and I'm sure I've had a chance to go through them all afterwards. Yeah, so just for members on the call and meeting tonight, so this is quarter two. So it covers that summer period, July to September, as David was just reporting on for ASB. And if I leave you down the report and perhaps pull out from the key sections if other colleagues looking at it on the screen. I think, you know, it's fair to say that the council, as you all know, is ambitious. So, you know, at 2.3, we talk about the volume of work that's within the Gedling Plan, recognising that it is a plan that covers three years, which has turned out to be very wise with all the challenges we've had over the last year responding to Covid. But it's a three year plan with 96 in reality work screens. And what you see therefore at 2.4 is a description of how we're performing in relation to the indicators that sit around those actions where we can measure practically the actions around, sorry, the indicators around the 96 actions. And what the report does, and I'm very grateful for Alan Green for marshalling this report together, is just to give you a snapshot of where performance is. And by and large, having reflected on everything we've done this year, which members on the call are conversant with, performance is still positive for Gedling. And you can see a little bit further down the report at 2.5, some of the positive performance highlights that we would want to bring to your attention. And there are a range of them across a range of portfolios and a range of different actions that are there to be seen. And happy to take questions later. It's obviously really important and Mike and SLT, myself and Alison, whilst we're always focused on the good things and taking every opportunity to congratulate staff and keep encouraging them and keeping their morale and motivation high. It's always the point of management and yourselves just to keep an eye on things that aren't going quite as planned initially. And it's not a disastrous picture in any way, shape for Gedling, but there are six areas which are covered in 2.7 onwards where performance is slightly behind target. And service managers, heads of service are very keen to describe this performance accurately. You know, we do all them to account to SLT, but it is in an open, transparent and encouraging way. So what you see there are six areas where, for very genuine reasons, performance is slightly behind target. But with heads of service and service managers indicating that they don't see any problem in those being delivered as per the original plan. There's a separate report which again is full of very positive things officers, you know, with your blessing and support across the council have delivered together. It's always refreshing, particularly this year, to read that achievement appendix. Some very good things on there. And you can see that when if you move down towards paragraph 2.8, some of those things highlighted really quite clearly. And a number of you have been involved in those. So I'd probably pause to answer questions Chair, if that's okay. And if I can answer them, I will. If not, I've promised to further investigate this week and get back to members. Thank you.
Yeah, we've got councillor Paling. You're on mute, I think. No, yeah.
It takes time for it to come off. It's not so much a question, but I really would like you to thank all the staff who have been working so hard in doing what they can to make this so positive. I'm amazed how positive it is, Dave. It really is pleasing. It's a shame I've only been able to go swimming once in the last year. That's not, nothing to do with the council. Let's hope that we can open the pools again soon and even more so the Bonnington Theatre. That we were talking about mental health earlier. And I know that the Bonnington Theatre was a real refuge for so many isolated people when we were able to open it in that brief spell between lockdowns. So good luck to the future is all really I can say. Thank you.
Don, I'll make sure that your remarks and thanks are passed through to Mike. Mike communicates weekly with every member of staff, councillor Paling, through a bulletin. And I'm sure I will pass on at the end of this meeting, your thanks for the achievements that officers have delivered at, you know, in a really difficult time for them, to be fair. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I've got councillor Hope next. You're on mute.
Sorry. Yeah, I raised this once in my earlier question, but I still find it very difficult. You know, under housing, page 56, you know, it says 53 net additional homes, which was short of the target of 120. And I fully understand that the pandemic is a bit of a problem. My point is, no affordable homes were delivered against a target of five. So out of 120, which was the target for house building, we actually were only attempting to get five affordable homes. And lo and behold, once again, we've hit a target of zero. And it seems, it seems as if this figure goes on and on. We have. You know, I always thought that our target was around about 20% affordable housing. And 20% of 120 is not five. And we don't seem to bother about it. Why are we not saying? First question is, why is the target five when it should have been 24? And why have none of them been built when nearly half of the 120 have? Yet these are, this is a question we've got to keep on asking until such time as the developers actually build the bloody things. You know, I really am. Every time it comes up, I look at these things and I think, no. But, you know, five isn't 20%. So we've reduced the target down to next to nothing. And then we built not none. And it's happening over and over again. When is it going to change?
Dave, have you got a comment?
Yes, no, certainly. No, and it isn't. It is a, it's a big question. It's a big question. It's a very good question. And it's not a quick answer. And I'm not the very best placed person to give it. But I can get that from Alison and Mike. But I think the very precede answer councillor Hope is that unfortunately, and nobody particularly likes this, is that the housing market has been entirely suppressed this year. You know, building sites haven't been working, properties aren't being built. There's problems, you know, at a range of timelines in terms of suppliers and the supply chain and workers and Covid. So the building has just not been happening. And that's certainly the case in Gedling. And that's, to be honest, nothing that Gedling Borough Council at this stage can do anything about. And I'm pretty sure that if you were to speak to the portfolio holder and the officers concerned, they'd share your frustrations and probably even have more than you've just described. In terms of the 20% target, what is the figure? I don't think councillor Hope, or this is the detail that others can give, that that 20% target exists anymore. Developers, developers, as you probably know, argue strongly about viability on sites. And colleagues that are on planning would probably be able to contribute to this answer better than I, to be honest. But they argue vehemently about viability. And the higher the percentage of affordable homes, the more they argue, the more the site is jeopardised. So there inevitably ends up with a compromise and sometimes even legal challenge on both sides, where the council, we've been involved in those compromise challenges that have gone to court to try and enforce and push forward the viability argument and question what the developer says. So I think we'd all share your disappointment, Mike, around the numbers. But the plain facts are, with less property being built, there is inevitably a link therefore to lower numbers of affordable homes. But I'm very happy to raise that with Mike and Alison and just get you. But I'm very happy to raise that with Mike and Alison and just get you a more precise answer. But I don't think it'll be far from what I've just described.
No, my point is though, we as a borough are accepting this. I'm on planning and I've argued it there.
Yeah.
I don't think we are accepting it, councillor Hope, to be honest. But the point is that you can take a position of not accepting something. The significant point is then can you do anything legally about it? And I think you'll find that this authority is pressing as hard as any other, if not more than others, to push that agenda forward. So accepting it, I don't think there is a view around it. It's acceptable. Quite the contrary, and others on the call will take a view on that. But then what the council can practically do is a slightly different question. And I think there's plenty the council is doing, but it's still not moving. And that is because it's not entirely of the council's gift to make this thing happen.
If I can have just a last shot, I'm not getting anybody kind.
I'm not taking it that way either.
Good. I understand the situation. But then I come back to the other one. I sit on planning and a developer says, well, you know, in lieu of affordable housing, we'll deposit 200,000 or whatever. Because that makes our son, what is Gedlin Borough doing with the 200,000? Surely they should, at the very least, be building some housing. You can't just sit on the money. You've got to actually say, let's start using it to maybe build council houses. I don't know. That comes back to my.
Well, I think, no, that is absolutely the right point to make. And I think that I can get you the answer to that. No, the council doesn't just sit on money and keep it as an investment. Certainly in the years that I've been here, we've gifted that money to housing providers. We've done developments with them. We've taken less than 106 contributions to make a development happen for affordable housing. So I think councillor Hollingsworth would be well versed to answer this question.
I hope she is.
I'm absolutely convinced that she could answer this and give you the detail that you require.
We'll save it for next time. So we'll let, I've got some other questions coming up. Rachel, councillor Ellis.
Yes, thank you. Interesting debate on housing. It's not going to go away, is it? But it's still worth airing every now and then. Right, what I'd like to do is to add my voice to that of councillor Paling in congratulating staff in doing such a brilliant job in such difficult circumstances. And one of the things that I note is how we managed to press forward with some things such as opening the viewing platforms in the country park, which is brilliant. And I know well appreciated by residents. So thank you all for that.
Thank you, councillor Ellis. I'll make sure that those are passed to the chief exec.
Okay, councillor Smith, Sam Smith.
Thank you, Chair. Page 56 about homelessness and welfare support regarding temporary accommodation. I alluded to it earlier when asking councillor Wheeler a question. But I still think a target of 15 weeks, which is four months in temporary accommodation, is such a lot of money. I mean, in 2019, 20, we spent 200 odd thousand pound on temporary accommodation, which if we spend that money on building temporary homes for our residents and add on the 311,000 pound government grant we got last year, that will save this council money and we'll be able to invest in better services. I just think, and I bring it up because I just think 15 weeks is such a long time to fund people to spend in B and Bs when we can do more as a council to solve it in the way I've just alluded to. So what are the timescales on that, Dave, you know, to start building our own temporary homes? Because that's just 18 weeks just isn't good enough.
No, so again, councillor Smith, I think officers and the portfolio would absolutely share your view that the time is not ideal and it's never suitable for individual people and families and families with children to be in that position. And it's complicated, isn't it? And you will have had these discussions in the past. And indeed, when you have your next conversation with councillor Hollingsworth, you know, you can dive into the detail again over this. I think, having listened to this conversation at SLT, you know, in recent weeks and months, you know, the complication is manifold. So there is an acute lack of accommodation that is available to be used for this purpose. I think everybody understands that to be probably the paramount problem. So, excuse me, so you are right to think about, so what are the other options? So for example, we have been leasing on a long-term basis properties from Jigsaw, formerly Gedlin Homes, to put people into a better, more suitable accommodation than the B and B, which is wholly not where we would want to be. So we have a number of units in addition from Gedlin Homes, Jigsaw. And there is a conversation that's certainly been happening about, you know, the ability for Gedlin to build its own properties through an organisation like a housing company. And that's definitely where Jenny and, you know, the staffing Paul's team under Alison Ball formerly have been doing their thinking. So, I mean, your best place, Sam, I can certainly start to get an answer from Alison and Mike to you. But you obviously got the opportunity to dive into this in some detail when you next meet. But, you know, it's the right area where we would all want to see improvements made. But the challenges within the housing market make it extraordinarily difficult.
Thank you.
Thanks for that, Dave. Just to come back on that, I appreciate that answer and I agree with you. And it is positive that the council is looking into doing that. But I've sat on this committee for every year and it's been a problem. So if we can really push forward and get timescales, we're spending 220 pounds a year plus on temporary accommodation.
Yes.
We've got the 311 from the government. If you put them together and spend some money this year on building homes, we'll bring the problem down. So just getting timescales on that would be great.
Okay, thank you.
So I've got councillor Barnes.
Thank you very much, Chair. I just want to go back to Rachel's point because it's a positive note. Gedlin Country Parks doing very well at the moment. Both car parks are always full now. And you know what? It's doing people really good to walk around and it's nice to see people smile again. So thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you, councillor Barnes.
Councillor Hope.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. Totally different point this. But I think it points up the strength of borough councils and district councils in how they work. I'm looking at the business grants.
Yes.
1500 small business grants have been paid out. You took in the money, you've made the grants, there was no problem. I speak from personal experience here, not in this particular district, I've got to say. It's a different district, it's New York and Sherwood. But exactly the same happened there, that it was efficient, it worked well and it was quick. And I'm sure it was the same in Gedlin. And I think that is the strength of district councils, that they can, within their areas, operate very effectively and very quickly. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Hope. I'll make sure that that gets passed through to Alison Ball, Alison Ball, who's led that piece of work. And it's just important to know, and some of you will know this, that that was, again, a huge piece of work, extraordinarily short notice, at a time when the council was closing its end-of-year budget books and accounts and trying to finalise the budget for this year as well. And the pleasing thing, I'm sure that you'll all, you know, recognise the importance of what I'm saying here, is that staff from different parts of the council came into finance revenues and benefits to get that work done. So there was a redeployment of staff across the council, as there is at the moment with the latest round of Covid grants, such as the Asprida Call to get the work done for you and for our local residents. Yeah, so I'll make sure that's passed on, councillor Hope, and it will be well received.
Okay, thank you. I think that's all the questions. I just want to also add my thanks to all the staff. I'm sure everybody on all the councillors in here in the meeting want to add our massive thanks to everything, everything the staff's done.
Thank you very much.
And thank you very much, Dave.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay, now we're going to move on to number seven, which is the corporate management risk scorecard. Now, we haven't got anyone talking to this report this month, but I think it speaks quite freely for itself. We're obviously seeing a lot of the Covid impact on things in that report. And I know we've looked at it before, so perhaps people are familiar with how it works. But we did think maybe another time we'll get an officer to come and talk to that scorecard. Does anybody want to say anything at this point? No, I think it's quiet. I think Mike's still got his hand up. Where is it from before?
Oh, no, no.
Oh, councillor Paling.
I just wanted to say, Chair, that I do hope that we can continue to press the government to release more money for Gedlin in general fund. I'm so disappointed that we're so hard strapped for cash that it's really affecting our risk assessments for so many of our activities. It's not all Covid related, even though Covid has had a very big impact on our bottom line. Thank you.
Okay, councillor Ellis.
Yes, just a couple of queries, which I dare say can be answered on another occasion. But first of all, I'm looking at item three. And I'm noting that the periodic review of Covid secure risk assessments is outstanding. And I'd like to know when that's planned to be completed.
You mean risk three are we talking about? Yeah.
Yeah, risk three, sorry, risk three.
Yeah. Helen can make a note of this, I'm sure, to take away.
Yeah.
Can I just clarify that? Is that failure to protect staff, including health and safety issues?
Yes.
Yeah.
Go on, Rachel.
Yeah, on page 76.
Oh, I'm on 78.
Yeah, page 76.
And it does actually occur on page 78, that's true.
Oh, right.
But failure to protect staff, including health and safety issues, it's a number one, no change.
Oh, action's outstanding. That's what Rachel's referring to there.
All right.
Yeah, I'm looking at the red on risk two, you see initially, which is a red.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's all I want to say there. I'm noting on risk one, I find that deeply concerning. And I do identify that what we're looking at is a collapse of our income and also additional spend on Covid, combined with the failure of the government to provide everything that it promised at the beginning of this pandemic. And I'd like to be kept updated with regard to where we're at because we could get into a serious difficulty if we're, you know, it's already identified as a red. Yeah.
Maybe, maybe, oh, sorry, Rachel.
No, no, say what you need to say. Yeah, maybe.
I was just saying that maybe we can, next meeting, we can get some, we can get some officer time to come and talk to this report.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah.
We can try anyway, can't we? I've got a question from councillor Creamer.
I've got one more.
Oh, sorry.
Then I'll finish, I'll finish.
I'll go on, Rachel, you have your second question.
These are all questions that probably can't be answered now. I'm looking at risk five, which is on your page 79.
Yes.
Which is another red. I am concerned, given we're now so dependent on digital technology. And I'm just wondering where we are with regard to prioritising ICT.
Okay. This is another one.
Thank you.
Yeah. Councillor Creamer.
Yeah, just a very quick one. On item four, page 78, risk four, 78. Just the failed recruitment retain staff, that's amber, which is reasonably good. But I'm just wondering after this third wave whether that's changed. I'm wondering how many people may leave. So I'm wondering if that is still actually in amber, that's all.
Right, okay. I think, remember, this report is up to September 2020. So I believe next time we'll have the quarter three.
We will have quarter three next time. And I'll request that an officer attends to speak to it so that they can answer your questions.
Thank you, Helen. Thank you very much. Okay, so without further ado, I'm going to go on to point eight. So I've got two sevens on my script. Ron, number eight now. I'm guessing you're on number eight. Anyway, the work programme, we're going to the work programme. Right, this week, you had a new, a new attachment came this afternoon for this particular item. So we just have a quick chat about the working groups. Let me get the words out. I'm just giving a quick update on flooding. That's my notes from Henry, so that's not going to work. A quick update about the flooding. We looked at the things that we do to help people already, such as a vulnerability list and how people can prepare their property and things like that. We're talking about doing some communication around this to residents to help everybody be a bit more prepared for flooding. Because that's part of our preparation, is to make sure residents are as prepared as they can be. We've got the county people who might be involved with this weren't able to attend a meeting because they're quite tied up with dealing with Covid things at the moment. But we're compiling some questions to send to them. And we've been asked to identify any roads that we know are at risk of flooding and send to the PASC team, I believe, at Sam Smith's right there. I wonder if he's got anything to add about that. Was that about what we've done, Sam?
Sorry, I missed that. Can you ask that again? Reading along on these papers, sorry.
About identifying roads which are liable to flooding. Because I think the officers felt that the councillors probably knew quite well what roads in their wards got flooded. So just for completeness, they were asking for people to, you know, inform them just so they could keep them on their agenda.
Yeah, that's right.
So that's flooding. And next, I'll talk a little bit briefly about domestic abuse. They're in the opposite order, aren't they, on the papers? Apologies. The domestic abuse, we've only had one meeting. We're having another meeting tomorrow. I thought the paper said it all really about what we've done. We found out about what the different agencies do and what support Gedlin provide, which was very interesting. And yeah, so we're taking that forward tomorrow. So that's the working group.
Sorry, what's that?
Sorry, carry on. My, the domestic abuse working group.
Oh, right. I haven't seen that. Where's that?
It's, you've got a new attachment this afternoon.
Oh, I didn't.
Page 90. Did you not get it?
No.
Ah, well.
Well, I didn't look, so.
Okay, if you want to have a look afterwards, there's a paragraph on page 90 about the domestic abuse group, domestic abuse and access to emergency accommodation for that particular group. Yeah. But we've only had, we've had one meeting so far. And it's pretty much in there, what we've done. Okay, so now we're looking at our plan for forthcoming meetings. So obviously we've got Jenny Hollingsworth coming at the next meeting, who's going to have lots of questions to answer, I can feel already. So we'll be offered the opportunity to put your questions in over the next few weeks or so. And we'll also have the quarter three performance and the quarter three risk register. So they're those things we've talked about today. And then in April, we're going to have councillor Gregory and councillor Barnes, councillor Peter Barnes. And we'll also have the complaints report that we get on an annual basis. And we'll also have an. And we'll also have an update on the economic developments working group that did during last year. Was it last year? Must have been, wasn't it?
Last year, yes.
And the year before really, wasn't it? So yeah, so Helen, did you have anything to add?
Can I just say, we all know that councillor Hollingsworth is coming next time. If anybody has any specific questions they would like me to address to her, if you could let me know. I will obviously email as I normally do. I'm going to ask her to talk about the, the document that we've already mentioned. I can't remember the title of it.
Housing development thing.
Strategy, yes. I'm obviously going to talk about that, but if you've got any specific questions that you want answering, then just let me know.
Okay, has anybody got anything else to say? Because I think, I think that's, there was, that was it because we've got no, we've got no reports and. No extra reports that we have to review. And there's nothing else urgent from my point of view. So thank you all very much for a great meeting, lots of involvement, lots of good questions for our guests tonight. So I hope we've not scared them all away, but I'm sure, or particularly, particularly the officers. We don't want to scare them away. Yeah, so thank you. Thank you very much for attending.